Good morning. Thanks for everyone being here. We'll call the work session for July 9th, 2019 to order. We'll turn it over to Dr. Cole for items of information.
Thank you Chairman Mansell. Our first area is under focus, Area 3 Supportive Learning Environment. I'll turn it over to Dr. Booth. He's got a couple on safety and discipline updates.
Good morning everyone. Just briefly talk about some of the updates as far as we get ready for the start of school, some areas of focus. If you can do that next slide for me please. You know, receptionist training is so critical. The response from that specific individual is so key to everything. So within the first 30 seconds of an incident taking place, they're responding. And so we've got to make sure that they know exactly what to do. So Chief Ellis goes through, has that with all of the receptionists throughout the system. Again, with the ability that if it happens in the classroom, they're responding down to the reception. If it happens with the first person that walks in the door, that's a critical gatekeeper scenario that we have to make sure they're prepared. So it's a vital part. To include even this building, if something were to happen, our receptionist is the first person to meet the public usually, as well as to respond and communicate externally to ask for help. Cardiac arrest, we're looking specifically at new Senate Bill 60 was introduced and approved. And it's quite a significant implementation of the law for our athletic department. Specifically, it requires twice a year training for coaches, training for, you know, offering opportunity for information to parents and students, et cetera, dealing with the effects and symptoms of cardiac arrest. And one of the most significant parts of it is it establishes a potential for a ministerial duty, which says they might very well be not immune to liability if something happens that they don't follow what we've asked them to do. Coaches are required to have that training before they start coaching. And we offer the informational part of it, as well as, you know, before a student who exhibits those symptoms is allowed to go back into the athletic event, has to be cleared enrolling by a physician or program. Staff faculty training, some of the areas since we started the school year off again. Part of the legislation implemented after the Parkland shooting began was talking about active shooter training. I'm not sure everybody understands it. I think we've done a very good job of identifying and establishing our protocols. But that is something that we need to keep fresh in everyone's mind. So we also want to make sure that Chief Ellis gets out and does faculty meetings and discusses exactly how to respond if an incident takes place. The farther we get from an incident, the likelihood is that people kind of forget about it. And so it's important to make sure that we keep that in our forefront of our minds. It says, you know, what exactly are my responsibilities, how to respond in the event of an active shooter. The active shooter video that's out there is through Safe Schools. And we intend to try to implement that so that everybody can watch a video on it, as well as get this supplemental training from Chief Ellis. Bus driver training, it's something that I do think that we probably have been somewhat remiss on. When we think about it, every day we're transporting thousands of our students. And so we have had incidences where, you know, adults are hostile towards our bus drivers, or at our bus stops, et cetera. But to develop and make sure we understand how are our bus drivers supposed to respond in the event of something like that happening? And as well as just how do we prevent any security issues from taking place in those particular scenarios? If you want to talk about an area of concern, that's got to be one of our highlights. Next slide. SRO training, and I've said this before, that the average response time in the event of an incident in most places for law enforcement to arrive is about three minutes. We are very fortunate with the graces of our school board to have an SRO at all of our school sites. But they have to be able to respond in the event of an actual emergency. So we want to increase the number of times that they qualify with their weapon from twice a year to four times a year, as well as make sure that they, twice a year, they're going through active shooter response training. You know, the last thing we need is for one of our SROs to freeze up because they haven't had that training. So we want to make sure that they're good. The community policing part of it again, is different. You know, it's not a beat on the street, it's a school. So we need to make sure that the relationships that they develop with the students, the staff and faculty are different than they would see outside on the street. So that's something else that I want to make sure that we implement this year. Our non-school locations, and we've talked about this at length, that came out of our safety meeting that we had. We've got to make sure we have some procedures in place for transportation and for maintenance and for the central office, et cetera, that when something happens, whether it's at Glenn Academy or otherwise, everyone individually knows how to respond and where to go to, and that is put in place. And on top of that, as far as a system, if something were to happen at our new athletic complex out at the stadium, how do we respond to that? And so we have to go through some scenarios and some plans. On our safety meetings, I mentioned already that, you know, we are required by law to meet twice a year minimum minimum community members. And we did a great job last year, had two meetings, and will continue to do that. A lot of great feedback, input that came from that. But also to make sure that our administrators are reviewing their safety plans and that we're making sure that, you know, on top of just doing it, it's not just something that gets put on a shelf and collects dust. Safety assessments, we'll ask all the schools again, we want their own assessment of their school with their teams, and then have an independent one done by the school resource officer. Then they collaborate on it, and then also to spot check through external evaluations, the vulnerability or potential for other additional resources that may be needed in those areas. Next one please. Safety grants made available by the state, this is pretty significant, $30,000 made available for each of the school sites. One of the main areas that we're looking for. And our middle schools will need to add vestibules to be an additional deterrent. We're allowing free access down into the hallways. With Night Bear, we'll be able to do that, and many of the elementary schools as well. That again is a significant delay. When you think about the three-minute response of anything taking place, we need to be able to curtail that and make sure that we can delay as long as possible. Also, using some of this money to redirect traffic, redirect the pedestrians and where they go. That primary example is Glenn Academy. Lease control access, things that we have will be put in different locations. Our communications upgrades that we want to make sure we also have in place. That's, you're talking about our radios and enhancing those. And we have also implemented, we will implement some of the camera upgrades that'll be there. Other areas of consideration for safety and security overall. When you talk about Mansfield Street, you'll hear later on today about our proposal to go ahead and build the gate. And so we're moving forward on that. That's a significant addition to us. And then camera upgrades at our four middle schools in Aggieka and at Brunswick High are undergoing right now. And so we're moving from the analog to digital. And so, you know, that's again, one of the soft areas of security. And likelihood is that we typically find incidents afterwards of vulnerability. But also we have our central dispatch viewing cameras all the time. And so they're able to identify issues that take place. Our technology security, we implemented something this year where we're changing passwords every 90 days. That is so critical. We've had issues with passwords and passwords. Somebody might have standard password for 20 years, and they're used to it. But the vulnerability aspect, that systems across the country are being hacked, and they're getting into things. And so we're making sure as well that our employees realize, don't open an email unless you know the source. Things of that nature. Our threat assessment team concept, we'll meet again in this month to talk about reestablishing the team and reestablishing our goals and intent behind a threat assessment analysis of potential problems. And so that's also something that's critical. So that's a down and dirty understanding of where we stand with safety and security for the upcoming school year. Any questions at all on those areas? I know I went through it quick. Yes ma'am.
Do you train the backup to the receptionists too? Because I know, you know, they're out sometimes.
Absolutely. I think part of that is, we offer it primarily for the receptionists, but also any secretarial staff that's there. Because, for example, a bomb threat may come in, and so anyone could pick up that, especially if your phones roll over from one to another. So we'll make sure that those are made available to everybody. Anything else on safety, security?
One thing on the technology security, the changing of the passwords. Can you send me a reference to that, a study? And the only reason I ask that, I hear that all the time from everywhere, all over the place. But there's that one minute where you open that email. It doesn't matter if you changed your password 20 minutes ago, it still intrudes into the system. And I don't think that changing a password, I haven't found any research that says definitively after they actually looked in it, besides it's a good idea, that it actually works, that it changes the...
I'll give you a great example. You know, we've had already requests for password type information. Hey, your account changed and we need your password.
Right.
That information gets out because somebody has not done the right protocol, and it gets out there. By changing it again, we've just lessened it. So it is a prudent thing to do, and I'd be glad to come back and find some additional information for it.
See, I'd just like to see one because I haven't found any. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you for hearing us out on that part. We're going to talk about discipline if we can. If you can pull that up for me please. Okay, let's go to the very bottom of that one please. I think you already were at the bottom of it. All right, stop right there if you will. These are the number of tribunals that were held this year. Can you, there you go. Okay. Basically, when you look at this, you see that we've had a total of, can you slide it over a little bit? 203 total tribunable offenses that were presented last year. That is a decrease of 10 overall for the school year. Of those, we had 27, I believe, that we did not hold for various reasons. Primarily, again, is that's about 13% of that for purposes of a manifestation decision or didn't meet the criteria that we truly established. When you look at overall issues that come from that, more waivers were signed this particular school year. We had an increase of 22 waivers signed, and we had a decrease of overall tribunals held in relationship to that by 35. So with offenses, we had a slight decrease in the drug offenses from 52 to 48. Probably our biggest significant change had to do with weapons. And we have a decrease from 25 events from the previous year to 16. So again, overall, somewhat of an improvement, not a significant improvement overall for tribunal offenses. Of these, we ended up holding, I believe, 14 total appeals by the board from these events that took place. And we've had a few of them that have gone to state that we're still waiting for responses back on. Anything on the tribunals that are represented there? Yes ma'am?
Can you explain what the repeat offenses column is?
Typical repeat offenses happen where you have a student that accumulates a large number of offenses. I'm going to show you some data here in a few minutes. You know, we're talking about somebody that at six referrals for a given year, they're put on a contract. Well, after that, the contract, you know, designates if you do this, this is what's going to happen. So when it gets to the part where we break the contract, that's when it's taken to a tribunal to determine whether or not that constitutes a chronic behavioral issue that would result in a student being removed from that setting.
Okay, but it's not included in this specific category column as well?
Right. And it could be because it's multiple things. We wouldn't have taken them to a tribunal because this is just tribunable offenses. This is a tribunal for that specific event, which is, you know, in essence, breaking your contract. All right, if you pull up the PowerPoint for me please. And I'm going to go through this quick. There's a lot of information. Be glad to answer any questions you have on it, but I'm going to pick up on it. Everybody's looking at it but me. There it is. Okay, so if you go to the first slide. Again, when you take a look at this, it's the elementary numbers. And you have two significant decreases, and those took place at Burrows and Goodyear. Burrows had a drop of 235 overall referrals from the year from last year, and Goodyear had 75. You only had one school slightly increase, and that was Satielemar. So you have again, a significant drop overall. If you go to the next one for me please. You take a look at your middle schools. You had two schools that jumped up significantly that were addressing with those administrative staff members concerns at Glenn Middle School and Needwood that we want to make sure that we're looking at the totality of the process as it comes to this. But when you're talking 319 increase in Glenn Middle and 329 for Needwood, you did have a decrease of 138 at Jane Makin and a decrease of 58 for Rizley. If you go on to that next one for me please. At our high schools, we decreased at Brunswick High by 135, and we decreased at Glenn Academy by 115. Yes sir.
Can I just scroll back down to the last slide please real quick? Yeah, that one. I just want to make sure that, I mean possibly, let's take... Um, I just wanna make sure that, I mean possibly, let's take Glen Middle for example, I mean possibly, there's a happy medium there. I don't, you know, I'm, I'm always afraid that we see numbers increase and then we go and say, gotta get your referrals down and then walk out. And that means, you know, principals start pushing it back to teachers and things don't get handled that should be handled. I'm not saying that, that happens. I'm just saying we gotta be cognizant of the fact that that could be the message we're sending. So I just wanna make sure that, I don't necessarily think, I'm sure, sure there's a large spike, we gotta find out why, for sure. Um, but was it the fact that the last year was just extremely low and everything was getting pushed back? Maybe some things that should've been handled? I don't know, the answer to that, but I just wanna make sure we don't just go in, and I don't think we will, if you go in with the, okay, look, we gotta lower it. Um, and that's the same reason I don't, I don't really keep in mind that Satella Marsh is up a little bit, because I know that in years past, it was hogging marshes. You know, no referrals in a year or no referrals in a semester, this is totally not accurate. So I just wanted to make sure that we're sending the right message and consistent messages when we go talk to these folks about it, you know?
And I understand, Ms. Hulsey, I think primarily when we, when you go into this aspect, there, there's a discernment that needs to take place with an administrator when they look at a discipline issue. When, we wanna support our principals.
Sure.
We want, also wanna make sure the principals are supporting their teachers in the process. And so when they look at each incident, fair, firm and consistently appraised, they need to make sure, again, is this something that the teacher could've handled rather than just kick it up? Those are things that they have to go through and, and analyze.
I agree with you that there's probably a happy medium when you have a change administrator, you know, administrator. Yeah, that's part of it. Finding that and, you know, where, how much should the teacher handle and how much, you know, that's a discussion that all schools need to, I don't know what's going on.
All right, if you go down to the next one, we've hit the high school, keep going to the very next one. All right, so again, when you look at the elementary schools, we're down by four hundred and fifteen overall referrals, but we're up by four hundred and fifty-two in the middle schools and we're down by two fifty in our high schools. Go on to the next one, please. In-school suspension, you know, corresponds directly with all those referrals. Again, you know, not a significant change, um, other than for Burrows and, um, and Goodyear for ISS days. You go to the next one, our, our middle schools primarily though, huge jump, um, five hundred and eighty-six days, um, when you look at that for Glen Middle School and a, and an increase of four hundred and forty-two at, at Needwood. Um, those are things that we need to, to make sure that we're covering. Every time that somebody goes in-school suspension, instruction doesn't remain the same. And so we have to make sure we're balancing that approach to it.
So based on it, cause I know you, well, you want to know that you, maybe you don't know all the answers yet, but you've looked at these numbers. So, so what are the main reasons that Needwood and Glen Middle are so far up? Is it just change in leadership style or is it, you know?
I, I think part of it is a change in leadership. I think part of it is that the, and I said it earlier, the belief in supporting the teachers. And so at times, we saw the spike occur after the first semester. So become used to two different new administrators in the process and wanting to support at the same time, realizing that there's some things that the teacher needs to handle. So as, as a teacher, again, you know, their classroom management skills need to be developed to the part where they understand, this is something I refer to the office, this is something not. But if I get used to saying, look, I can kick this to the office and it gets handled, you see something like this. And I think again, that's something that we're asking them to appraise and decide, you know, if that, if that's where we're at. I don't think it's anything dealing with it, you know, the incidents are taking place, we're not, I, I'm a firm believer, you know, we're don't, we're not gonna hide any of the data. Here it is. And so, you know, we don't wanna send the message either, don't write up kids. We wanna make sure there's an understanding of, and I said discernment, of who, you know, how to handle each and every one of those cases. If you go to the next one. Again, you know, when you look at, um, in-school suspension days, again, you see a, a decrease overall at Glen Academy, you had a slight increase at Brunswick High. Go on to the next one for me, please. System wise, we had a slight increase of thirty-nine for elementary, uh, twelve hundred and seventy-six days for middle school. That's a lot of days out of class that we need to, to address. And a decrease of five hundred at our high schools. Go on to the next one for me, please. Out of school days, again, you know, the, these are usually the most severe incidents that take place. Um, we did see a decrease at Burrows. Um, we saw an increase at Glendale, uh, for out of school days. And again, some of these instances warranted, no doubt, the removal of a student from it. So, um, but overall, you'll see a decrease in the overall OSS days at all of our elementary schools, those of those I just noted. If you look at your middle schools, which is your next slide, you're gonna see a decrease of forty-three at Glen Middle School. So again, a decrease in OSS days where they compensated by putting somebody in school. You do have a slight increase at Jane Makin and you had pretty well, um, no significant changes at Needwood for out of school days, but Rizley had a decrease of seventy-one. Go ahead for the next one, please. You know, overall, again, at your high schools, you saw an increase. You saw an increase at Brunswick High of two hundred and fifty days and you saw an increase of two hundred and twenty-seven days at Glen Academy. If you go to the next one as a system look, you're seeing basically a hundred and twenty-five day decrease at elementary. You're seeing a, a slight decrease overall at your middle schools with a hundred and three, and then you're seeing a, a significant increase at your high schools of four hundred and seventy-seven. So again, you know, it's based on the events that take place. Kind of taking a sharper look at that and some of the areas to, to be concerned about. When you look at your elementary schools, um, when you see that fifty-five percent of referrals are subjective, meaning, you know, it's, 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 it's up to the discretion, the sermon of usually the, the teacher that sends it to the office. And then of thirty-three percent of the referrals involve some sort of physical aggression. We do have some increases in, uh, decrease in fighting at our elementary level, but an increase in number of batteries. So again, that's defining exactly what took place in an incident. If you go on to that next one, please. When you look at your middle schools and the same concept, again, we talked about the significant increase in referrals of four hundred and forty-four, but sixty-five percent of the referrals are subjective. And so again, it goes back to just understanding what should go to the office, what shouldn't, et cetera, and understanding, you know, cultural differences, understanding, uh, you know, the, the basis for the events that take place. Only fourteen percent of those that were physical aggression, even though we had a pretty significant increase in the number of fights that took place. And part of that, I think, has to do with categorization and how it gets put into the system. Take a look at the high schools, you're looking at, again, our biggest, biggest issue is attendance. And attendance related, meaning that's, it's a tardy issue or if it's skipping or something of that nature, but you're looking at sixty-one percent of your referrals are in that category. Twenty-seven percent are for, are subjective issues and then you have only a small percentage that are actually for aggressive behavioral type incidences. You did see an increase in the number of fights that took place, an increase of forty-five overall. If you look at by grade level, real quick, one of the areas again, that we'll look into as we start analyzing, you know, most of the cases, you can see a systemic flow of, of concerns, uh, if there's an equal distribution and sometimes something jumps out. And so, you know, for example, Goodyear's fourth grade, we need to look and see what's going on in Goodyear's fourth grade, to see if there's, there are issues there. Is that a cohort movement, et cetera? If you go to the next slide for me, please. When your middle schools, again, um, you're looking at Needwood's sixth grade. I mean, a significant change, significant difference. Seventh grade overall is pretty consistent. It's your high number and it, it typically is, um, and historically, so, but we have to look at that and then when you look at overall totals for, um, high schools, it's predominantly, it's your high, it's your ninth or tenth graders that, that come into you. Go on to the next one and we look at another area that, uh, that we're, we're concerned about is disproportionality. And so when we look at what we consider to be, you know, a concern for us, when you look at the, the difference between the number of referrals overall and the population of that particular, um, representation, you, you have to be a little bit concerned when you have high disparities between the two. And so we need to address this and part of that has to come back to, um, cultural issues that we need to be aware of. And we talked about the subjective referrals that are there. When you talk about the issues of, um, it's not just a school issue, it's a community issue that need to be addressed, but when you look at these overall, when you have some disparities are, are as low as five percent, but others are as high as fifty-nine percent, we have to go back and just say, you know, are we addressing, are we looking at the, the cultural differences and is there potential for bias in, in the process? You look at your next one for middle school and high school, you see the same disparity and same concerns that are there that we intend to address through a lot of professional learning opportunities, as well as just gaining information from our stakeholders regarding, you know, what else can be done in, as a community aspect? Because it's twofold. It's not just, um, what's happening in the classroom, it's oftentimes what's happening in the community when they come back in. Um, overall, when you take a look at that, if you go to that next slide, please, you're still looking at the, the percentages that are there with their sixty-four percent of our referrals for black students who make up only thirty-four percent of our population. There's a, there's a thirty percent difference in that and the exact, almost exact opposite when it comes to our white students and that make up only forty, make up forty-six percent of our population. And the other two are pretty, pretty negligible. If you go on to the next one and talk about male, female, uh, you know, by far, seventy-nine percent of our elementary school students who receive, receive a referral are male. And so, um, that's a, that's again, something that, that needs to be understood and is understood by our teachers. You know, it drops to sixty-three, seven percent in middle schools and drops to fifty-four percent in high schools as far as distribution wise. Go to the next one for me, please. Need, same thing that goes along the lines with race, we also look at economic status and so you see a disparity oftentimes that is the same as what you saw in, uh, in the race distribution that needs to be assessed and addressed. Go on to the next one for me. Same issues that take place with, with our, um, high schools and middle schools. You hit the next one for me? I think the key to this one is, um, when you take a look at the number of students who received zero referrals, and these are percentages, but seventy-nine percent of our students, zero referrals. So I think that's, that's a key to this. If you go on to the next one for me, but when you take a look at the numbers of actual referrals, um, when you take a look at cumulative, these meaning that a student that comes to us who may leave, these are cumulative attendance numbers, seventy-nine percent, zero referrals. Of those in the one referral to five category makes up about forty-three percent of your overall referrals. It's the next part, the six and up, basically what you have is four percent of our population make up fifty-seven percent of all of our referrals. Let me say it again, four percent of our overall population make up fifty-seven percent of all referrals. Those are things that we need to, again, as we start a school year out, we need to address what we can do to intervene for those particular students. And the last couple of slides again, are just, um, you know, going through the percentages for PBIS, um, and overall percentage of discipline issues that take place, that kind of replicates what we already hit. But if you hit the last slide, um, referral by location for elementary schools, oops, back up one? Okay, stop right there. Um, the top place for referral taking place at elementary happens to be our, um, classroom, followed by the hallway and then the third location for elementary are our buses. So again, a lot of referrals that take place in that particular area. If you look at the last slide, which has to do with our middle school and high school areas, number one referral happens to be in, in the classroom again, followed by what's called on-campus, that's your, that's your discipline for tardies and for skipping and things of that nature, followed by your hallways. That's an awful lot of information to cover, um, but it, it's been very, very well vetted by Amy Yakabachi and others to look at. It's something that all of the schools will need to take a look at, analyze their data to figure out, you know, how they approach it for the coming year. Any questions at all on it? Yes, yes ma'am?
I have a few. Um, so anytime a teacher writes a referral, it becomes part of these numbers. Is that true?
Yes and no.
Okay.
Yes and no. And, and part of that may really, and I'm, I'm just totally transparent, there may be one that, uh, the administrator may get and say, you know, that's really not a justifiable referral and they, and they could delete it from the system, okay? But if a, if a teacher submits a referral and the administration acts on it, it's in these numbers.
It's in the numbers, okay.
Now, as Mr. Hulsey said earlier, sometimes they don't get reported at all. And so those are the ones we worry about because it, it, it skews the data if there are incidents that really do take place and we don't know about it. And so what, what comes to light is when they progress from elementary, middle to high and, and a student has discipline issues and then all of a sudden, you know, nothing's recorded and then all of a sudden it, it pops up at the next level and they're like, what's going on? And so, um, historically, it's important to understand what, what's, what's happening with all of them.
Okay.
Yes ma'am?
I was just gonna say, when you look at elementary school and you see that sixty-six percent or whatever the percentage was comes from fighting and battery, we talked about that wellness policy and I know there were some things we didn't like about that, but one thing was increasing recess. And I think there's data to show that at an elementary school age, when they have an outlet for, you know, moving about outside the classroom or a time to do that, sometimes they're able to better handle themselves when they're in the classroom. Do we look at any kind of correlation and making changes?
I think that's a, that's a great, great question as well. I've actually found that we have a policy on that to provide for recess. And so, um, I'm gonna address the policy issue separate from the wellness, it might be tied together in one way or another. But it also talks about whether or not you can withhold it, our policy does. And so those are the key issues, is some of our kids that are really truly acting up, some of them may need an outlet. And so we needed to find how is that happy medium in between there so that we can say, you know, burn off whatever's there, but also be in class. And what time of day you hold it is critical as well, based on the age level and maturity and et cetera.
Right. And I know some, it is withheld sometimes and sometimes it's withheld for the whole class.
Right.
Um, so I, I don't really like to see that. But then also on the other end at high school, when we see that attendance issue, I, I think that's more, I don't see that as much of a discipline. I mean, I know it kind of falls under this, but we've got to find a way to make those kids want to be in class and obviously giving them a referral is not the, the answer because we're just seeing so many, so.
I don't disagree with you at all and, you know, I, I, I've been doing this for a couple of decades now, close to it. And tardies, if somebody can figure out a great response to how to handle tardies, we're open ears. I mean, it, it is just one of those things that has not changed and, and, you know, it's, it's, the consistency of how to apply it, I think is pretty well a concern that I have. One teacher might not do it, one teacher might, we have an administrative issue that we need to address. But, you know, to send a kid to ISS for, for something of that nature where they may be tardy for a few minutes and they're gone all day.
I know, it is tough. Well, I mean, I think for, and it's, there are different triggers for different kids as far as what motivates them, but it, like an academic kind of incentive, you know, thirty points on their lowest quiz grade or something like that, if at the end of the nine weeks, they've only had one tardy maybe. I, I don't, just to find something that's gonna help alleviate this. And do the kids know that we're looking at this saying, this is a huge problem? For some it might matter, for some it might not, and you've gotta educate the parents too.
Yeah, and I do think we've had some movement where we, we put attendance and tardies as part of work ethic. We saw some, some movement, but not a significant number. But I do think that, uh, some of the suggestions that came out of the, the climate meeting, community meeting that we held, um, will be addressed and implemented this school year. I think it's, it's essential that we do this.
Right, okay, good.
Thank you. Also just like to add to that in reference to the high school. I really think if we kind of focus on graduation, putting that towards making sure that our students realize, if you're not gonna be, uh, at school, you're not gonna be there on time, it is going to affect your graduation. I think that is the key. Because if we don't start doing something, they feel like they can just miss and, and, you know?
Well, I, I would tell you, Ms. Babbitt.
Do exactly what they wanna do and that's what they're doing.
I agree.
If you see a great number.
I think part of it is this, um, attendance can't be tied to academic grades necessarily as far as you, you miss, we used to have that, we used to say, you miss ten days, you don't get the credit. But we can't do that. But, you know, maybe as, looking at the outside, I, I believe that walking though, is a huge incentive, okay? And that is a privilege, it is not a right. So there are things that we could tie this.
Yeah, there's a lot of different things that we can do, but I'll get with you on that. Also, uh, with the, who makes the decision on the referrals? Because if you go back and you look at our town hall school, it says eighty-one percent Because if you go back and you look at our town hall school, it says eighty-one percent of the referrals were for black students, will only make up sixty-one percent of the student population? That's phenomenal. That is, that's, that's, that's a large amount of students. So are the teachers doing the referrals or are there...
Teachers do the referrals, I mean typically, so, but again, and, and the, the sermon of whether or not it goes in the system and whether or not a student is held accountable for it becomes an administrator. And so, you know, as we approach this, we're asking all the schools to analyze their data to, to determine where they're at with it.
That's huge. Same with, that is huge.
Yes, ma'am.
Beresmalet, ninety-five percent referrals for the black students who only make up eighty-two percent? I mean, what are you suggesting that we do for that?
Well, I think there are two things and, and Ms. Haywood, is she here? We had a very good discussion today to talk about how to address disproportionality. And so I do believe that we have to do some things and it's, it's, to me, it's twofold. It's a community issue, but it's also an educational issue within our own staff and faculty about how to approach these things. So I think that the, the essence of it becomes this, there is inherent bias that often occurs. But as well, we gotta make sure that we're not dismissing automatically just because. And so we have to figure out a balance with all that.
That's huge. Thanks.
Go ahead.
Good, Mike.
No, go ahead.
We've, you've shown a lot of data and there's a lot of skewed information in the data that shows that there's an issue that we need to address. The one thing, for as long as I've been on the board, what I would really like to see is on the backside of that, an actual report of what we're gonna do. And sent back to the, the school board members where we can say that, okay, we, we've looked at this data, there's a disproportionality in this, of, at this school, and this is what the administrator's gonna do. Kind of a follow-up because I've, you know, you notice if you don't put your stake in the ground, it's not gonna get addressed. Because there's so many things to do, it's not like it's ignored, but there's so many things to do and...
Well, and Mr. Madella, I think, I, I agree with you and I think part of this is this, and there might be a little difference in philosophy, you know, as far as how to address this. My personal take on it is, I believe we need to have feedback from the community regarding what the perceptions are, what issues we can address. That's one part. The other part is what, what takes place in our classrooms and in our hallways and by our administrators and figuring that out. And a, and a root cause analysis is to identify all that and then come up with how do you address it? But the key to what I think you just said, which we've talked about as well, is the fact that, once you've identified all that, what interventions can you put in place that curves that behavior from taking place? And those are the things that I think more than anything, we've got to figure out what to do. And it can't be just a, I understand the issue, but now what can, what else can be added to it? And we had a great principals meeting and the discussion came back from, from two of our minority principals who said, even there with these strong numbers, what steps can they take afterwards, once they do identify it? And we have to figure those out. It's not an, it's not an easy solution. I mean, this is a national issue that, you know, we're, we're presenting to you. I mean, it's, it's something that, that obviously very concerning.
And it'd be nice to be the ones to solve it, you know, just get there and put something down and if, whatever it may be, say hey to three people before you walk in. If that was a simple thing and then you look at the data after that, at least put something in and look at the data after it to see if it worked. Mind you, that's a very rude example, not rude, but crude example and, but, you know, implement something, look at the data and, and change it, talk to the other schools, we know what to do.
Right.
But I would like to see the backside of it, what we're gonna do about it and how we're gonna monitor it. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Any other questions? A lot of information, you have it, you know, you can contact me if you had any other questions on it. That's cool.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson, a lot of workers on that preparing all that. Our next item is under focus area five, which is professional capacity, we have a hiring update. So I'll turn over to Ms. Bennett. I'm sorry, I jumped right over. Ow, not...
Skip all that far. Mr. Blue...
I was going, is everything built?
Facility, everything working out with all of our, sorry, cut out. Actually, our next area is under facilities and software.
Starting at the top of the list, Glen Academy, building the near building, hopefully moving teachers in next week, let them get their classroom set up. The outside sidewalk work is underway right now, so that's gonna be in good shape for school to start. Science building, demolition is continuing to make way for the aspect of disavatement. That's, that's still on schedule. The fencing for Mansfield Street, we will talk about in the proposed action item, we do have something to present on that. Athletic field, the Edo Miller, I think Mr. Walter and I are gonna look at the, the concept and the institutional Friday. That's what we're gonna try to do. Okay, but really soon.
Soon as we're looking.
That's basically gonna be a fence layout that we should get started. Drop-off canopy for Greer and Stillen, nothing new to report for there. Likewise with the parking lot, new Beresmalet is coming along very nicely, we expect the parking lots, driveways, canopy, everything to be complete by August one, so we're looking pretty good there. We'll drag off into the fall, will be irrigation, landscaping, playground equipment, things like that, but we just have to get, you know, enough land to be able to do all that. Right now, we can't really get started too much on that, but that'll come around pretty quickly after school starts. Stadium renovations, staff has moved in, we're still putting together all the pieces, parts for the furnishings, but that's looking pretty good. The two poles for the net were set, the last pole was set yesterday and the net will be installed next Thursday, so that'll kind of get that wrapped up. The only thing that's gonna drag a little bit, but we should still be okay, are the stadium chairs. They'll be shipped on the fifteenth to be installed on the nineteenth, which still should put us ahead of the first home game, real home game. So that's shaping up very nicely. The paving is just right around the corner from being installed at the parking area as well. Altama Elementary, site works proceeding very well, we've, we're in good shape there, we've been responding to the county, it's been a long time since we built a school in county, and we've been responding to all their comments from their review committees and things like that. I don't think there's been any issues that we got, but minor things, we have a meeting with the county management office, so we'll see how that goes. So that's probably the biggest question mark right now is joint water and sewer, so hopefully that'll work itself out as well. But otherwise, I think we, we got approved plans from the state, and I think we're looking at six or seven weeks to be able to put out a bid package to receive a big package. Receive perhaps in seven weeks, that's right on track, so.
Now, you're probably already looking at this, but as, and I know we don't have the money right now to do, but if we're gonna look at long-term plans for Edo and utilizing it for, for whatever, for continued use, I'd like to see us try to plan for some type of covered facility for the teams there. I mean, it's just, whether it's a metal building with, you know, a divider in it with two multi-purpose rooms on either side, or where they can get out of the weather or whatever else.
You mean for linear field?
Yeah, for linear field, yeah.
Okay.
It's just when storms come in and everything else is, they don't have anywhere to go. I mean, everybody's trying to rush out of there through a, you know, a gate the size of that door and then we're just, it'd be nice for them to have, if we're gonna use it long-term, we probably have to look at having some type of cover.
I think we can count on...
Locker room type, doesn't have to be, you know, fancy, but that'll build one with two multi-purpose rooms, probably do.
Okay, okay.
All right. Got a change order too. Change order, you want to go over that now or are you like...
Or...
Altama? Site clearing? Is the credit?
The credit.
Oh, the credit, okay. We can do that now.
Okay.
Just be on tonight, I guess?
Yeah.
This is a debuff change order returning the balance of our owner contingency and what's left of the survey allowance, the amount of, I can't read it, fifty...
Can you make that bigger?
Fifty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty cents, gonna be a debuff. So that'll be all the agenda tonight. All right, Greer, Stillen Marsh Looping, projects are on schedule, now scheduled is to be complete in September, we won't be finished until February when school starts, so most of the work will be just putting the metal panels on, which is not as disruptive as nail and shavings anyway, so hopefully that'll work itself out as well. Center for the Arts, I think Dr. Cores is waiting on a final MOU at some point to...
Intergovernmental agreement.
I think we met, as y'all know, but you haven't, I think it's been a month or so since we met, but I think soon we'll be hearing back from the college to, for another meeting to set up, you know, times that we can discuss the intergovernmental agreement, which will be the final working document that we're working toward. But, you know, we want to be ready for the, getting them ready to, to work on that, build that project, so that's kind of our next step, but nothing to report since our last meeting, I don't believe.
And finally, we need to report. Action.
See, this ten o'clock thing throws everybody off. Everybody's on their game today.
Like change the baseball, like a big game.
You got it.
Perfishing the team?
Ah, you got that there. On page one, probably the chief, I have a note, Al's already listed, all the three major construction projects are scheduled to be completed, but some are moving on time and scheduled as a basic direction, it equals that sixty percent, so it's, you know, exactly where it wants to be. Probably most significantly, that's a note on this on page three, we had a greater revenue for this previous month, it exceeds over half a million total, we've got a true up that happens twice a year at the state. And, and then we made an increase on a monthly basis, all we did in twenty twenty was a protection by twenty-five thousand dollars per month, all we hear out of the annual at this point. So we're in the, the team, there was a summary report on page four and five, that payments on that actual versus previous years, and forecast, I mean, far much higher than what we're expecting, and a lot of, with a really great health payment, so... So, there's some details, a lot of, we haven't made that before, but the key projects that have been considering there, they're all moving on to the next one.
What is included in the tech upgrades project of East Flash Three?
Well, right, right now, I think like for example, I think part of the funds that will be proposed later on for the fencing, Al, that is sitting in that tech fund area right now, Al, at that...
That's where that access gets put into.
Okay.
We've used it for a lot of cameras, security cameras.
Okay.
It's the best form, but I believe they're developing, developing technology now.
That's right.
And that's where all our excess revenues end up in that category.
On that category, okay.
So you'll see that one go up and down as we need to pull from it to do other things, but all the, the excess revenue, each month, like this month, is a half million dollars, that went back into that category. And we'll pull out of that to finish the fencing in Glen Academy, that's kind of our catch-all. But we have been using it for cameras and things like that. We'll have the next big hit for it will probably be our fiber backbone going to New Altama.
It's going to be expensive.
That's gonna be an expensive project and we're gonna keep it up aside to be able to pull that off when it comes, maybe next year, but we, that's one of the things that we're gonna work on this.
Any other questions? Thank you. All right, now, that's probably for Ms. Bennett, for a running update, or if you...
So I begin the information provided to you with where we are right now, and you can see it says as of June twenty-eighth, and I want to make it more aware, we received two resignations on Friday, July fifth, so this is gonna, I know the new, new fiscal year starts July one, but we try to present this information for our attrition for nineteen-twenty, we'll probably close it out, not probably, we'll close it out when school begins on August one. Okay, so these numbers still continue to sort of move around a little bit. But I just wanted you to see at that point what our attrition is and our percentage is right at nine percent. And when I showed the mid-year information from the state, we were at nine point five. So we're running just about where we typically come in with us leaving the district. And interesting, looking at the certified positions to fill for the nineteen-twenty school year, as of the last board meeting, ninety-two percent of certified positions have been approved on board. Of course, we have some we will consider from tonight's meeting. Right now, we have, as of this information, sixteen point five positions, those are the positions that the superintendent will present for you to approve tonight. We, that will, we are still actively working to shore up all of these vacancies. We were having a discussion about this last year, we started with about thirteen openings, and what we found is what we started with, we weren't ever able to chip away from because we continue to get resignations, retirements, and so as we tried to fill positions, we can never get ahead of where we started with our vacancies. What I do want you to know is we're sitting in a much better place right now than we were this time last year. And I really think, I do have to say, Michelle Seals, Mrs. Seals, who's sitting somewhere right behind me, honey, began this process with principals probably in February. What are your projected openings? What, you know, also reaching out and trying to make sure we were getting as many applicants as possible. So I think that has really been a major contribution to the fact that we're starting in a better spot this year. So we'll have an update after, of course, tonight, these numbers are gonna look even better.
And if you'd like, we can provide this again to the next board and you can kind of give you an idea when we start the school year, what that's looking like. I think we are, I mean, I hear anecdotally, which is interesting, when I go around and speak to the principals, that they're all like, well, this is a better year, or find, you know, you start seeing a slight change of a, a little bit more availability of teachers, but what's surprising to me of all of this, and I think that's as last year, elementary seems to be our hardest area, which is completely contrary to almost all of my experience and all of the, all of the problems here in the past. So that, that's certainly an area that, you know, we need more teachers in, but so anybody... I think what's funny, Dr. Whitehead said she was, she has, like listened to some old radio shows on some radio station, it was from nineteen fifty, and had a commercial for, you know, go into teaching, it's a good profession, and this is for elementary, you know, teachers back in nineteen fifty, so just kind of, you know, what, this kind of goes around, it's been around a long time, but anyway, so I appreciate all the work that you've been doing, but are there any questions about these openings and what we're at right now?
How are we looking with nurses to start the year for next year? I know we had maybe a couple of...
We...
With full for...
There'll be a position for you all to consider for tonight, and at that point, we'll be both sat.
Good thing. Somebody just asked me that question, I wanted to plug that in. Sorry, John.
Somebody asked, somebody was gonna ask it.
Somebody asked me the same thing yesterday, I said, I want my...
There's a reserved for you, but I thought I...
We're actually finding we've got a really good, we're excited about the cannon, we're having some good... Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Bennett. Our next area we're gonna discuss is our proposed action items, so if you go back to the beginning, please. So some of these you've heard a little bit about, some you have not, but these are the items we will consider tonight at six. So I'll start with the first one, which is, I guess Ms. Preston talked about, some of these are skilled, some nutrition are curious.
The first one is for the self-drink defending, either Pepsi or Coke. And Coke gave us the best providers on the park for the district, sadly, by the record of the state.
Questions, ma'am? Next item is IC renewal, which is something we do every year, but for FY twenty, I'll turn to Dr. Whitehead if you'd like to.
Sure, I, I think the board's aware of infinite campus, many of you as parents have the, the app, that's something we hope to truly promote that parent portal this year. We have several initiatives we're gonna push out to do that, and this is just seeking renewal for that information system, and we use that for our state reporting as well.
Thank you, Dr. Whitehead.
Is that an increase from last year? Or is it just not even, you know, the number?
Not by unit, it is not, it's a, it remains the same.
The next one is chicken products or, it's food nutrition, so Ms. Preston.
Okay, Ms. Lewis is here.
Okay, Ms. Lewis, I'm very...
Chris can pick it up a little bit, so we'll see.
John, anything you want to add to that?
We just had an opportunity to piggyback with several counties across South Georgia to buy chicken, and I know it's more late, and so we're just asking to create that we can purchase with the South Georgia Code. And so we're just asking to approve that we can purchase with the South Georgia program, which produces our processed chicken overall.
Any questions about that? All right, next item is access control surveillance cameras, self-term shutdowns.
This is our annual agreement, basically, anytime a camera goes out, or if there's a, one of the access control had issues or software upgrades, we've consolidated that a little over a year ago to the district level, made it a lot easier on the schools. So if something happens, they cover it. So this is our normal budgeted item, and so we're just asking the school for to approve that. We have nearly two thousand cameras in the school system.
Is their response, Tom?
Very good. If we identify it, they respond to it. As I mentioned earlier, we're actually in the process of upgrading our middle schools, GICCA, and some of the cameras that runs at high school. And last year, we installed them at the elementary school, so we're moving along greatly.
I think you've got the next item too, Dr. Wilson, there's a few questions about that under our annual.
Every, every year, we are required to ask the board to approve the training outline. And so we have to give five hours of training to every new administrator, new panel member, new presenter. And so if they're, if they're, somebody who's already received the five hours, they have a minimum requirement to just go through a refresh process. But what we're responsible to do as far as the state rule is to go through certain areas and to make sure that the panel members understand their role. So the issues that we present there, Title Twenty covers a ton of areas of concern that we have to go through, and we go through in detail with everyone. So if you'll just scroll down through that, those are all the Title Twenty areas that we actually talk about individually. We also talk specifically about, you know, weapons and things of that nature that they really need to have a good understanding about. They need to understand the issues of an appeal. Also, they need to understand how special ed rules apply and how to make sure discipline is handled. We go through some of the very major key cases that have, that are on the books so that they understand the implications, search and seizure, different issues with due process and this Henry County case that we've talked about with self-defense. All of those are areas that are, that are covered in this. We also then cover our policies that govern, you know, our actual code of conduct that the board approves so that they understand what each of them says. We talk about bullying, we talk about as well, just the overall procedural process. We talk about the steps to take with the timelines and what you must do as far as a manifestation decision. And then, you know, when it really gets down to it, making sure that they understand that they're independent, making a decision, that they're neutral when they walk in the door, and that they understand the ethical standards that apply and the confidentiality that apply. So we asked the board, if you go down just a little farther on that, there are processes in place as far as understanding the rules of evidence and as well as how to handle witnesses and, you know, the phases of an actual tribunal, what happens during phase one, what happens during phase two, et cetera, and what to consider. Because again, you know, a fifth grader doing something is far, should be handled far different than a senior. So they have to understand the difference of the ages. And so again, you know, the options for a waiver and how it's handled and whether or not they have the ability to sign a waiver at the school level. Any questions at all about this? We're going to hold, you know, a mock tribunal that has the ability for them to go through and to feel what a tribunal's like. Because maybe the first time they've ever done it in the past, we might bear will be either as a panel member or a presenter. And so we're going to ask them to come in and sit there in a tribunal, to watch it, watch the process. It is a daunting task, it's a very detailed, you know, responsibility, huge responsibility for them that we need to make sure they're ready for it.
How many hours of training did you say?
Minimum of five hours for, for this training, minimum. And every bit of what we just talked about eats up every single bit of that. Any other questions on the outline? And we just would ask the board to approve the outline. That's very consistent with what other systems do.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson. The next area is policies. I know we had a policy committee meeting recently, and I'll let Dr. Wilson go.
These are the, these are the policies that we're going to ask the board to consider. They're out there right now for public viewing. We have some others that were not added that we'll make some changes to, but here are the six that we have. First one up there is the, I'll go through a process here from the ones that I have, I'm sorry. So but the drug-free workplace one, you should see the highlighted areas. Specifically, what we're addressing is the issue of the CBD oil. And so again, as we mentioned during the policy update, we're talking about the issue that even hemp and cannabis has some level of THC. I know that our, the Department of Transportation said our bus drivers can't do it. There are so many concerns out there relative to reactions to other medication, et cetera, so they take a stand. The GSBA has sent out guidance on this, and so our discussion with Harman-Hartley is that this is, this is consistent with that. That basically says, we're not going to allow that, we don't want that to take place. So we're asking the board to approve that one. If you go on to the next one, lunch charge policy, again, the national standards. If we participate in the National Free Breakfast Program, Free Lunch Program, that we're responsible to have a policy about how do you handle a student who has not paid or can't pay for their meal? And so the steps that are in here, this is a, this is a standard step by step. Managers are trained on it, principals are advised of what to do and the responsibilities that are, that are in place. You know, we incur expenses every year that take place usually towards the end of the year, where we may get between fifteen and twenty thousand dollars of money that is still owed to the school system, that our general funds cannot pay for, that we have to make sure that we recoup somehow. So this, these are steps that we put in place. And we also want to be discreet about it, we don't want to embarrass a student, we also want to make sure that students are fed. So I believe these are very reasonable steps that should be taken place. Next one, if you will, please, the exchange students. This is a new policy as well, and again, part of this becomes, the exchange program is a very lucrative business out there, but it's also a very good program for us to endorse. We want to do it on a limited basis, we want to have a firm understanding of the rules that are in place as far as accepting an exchange student. And what this policy does is put those in place so that there's no ambiguity regarding, you know, how it'll unfold. As far as the process as well, that the district staff will govern the acceptance of someone. And, you know, schools will get calls, hey, I'd like to send a foreign exchange student. Well, that company that does it, they make a lot of money off of it, but the burden is placed by us, we want to make sure that it's equally distributed. Next one, if you.
I have a question on that one.
Yes, ma'am.
We just, Ms. Haywood, last, or I guess in our policy committee meeting, mentioned that they were considering limiting the program to a year for a student. And so in item number two, it's just saying they may be involved in a full year or semester. But I don't think there's language that's consistent with them saying it has to be limited. Do we, do we need to add that?
Limited to the number of years or limited to the number of participants, which one?
Number of years.
I will, we'll address that, I remember your comment about that, I apologize. Okay. And student assignments to schools, again, this is upgrading it based to be consistent with the state laws that we have a capacity issue, that we establish the numbers that would be allowed in each school, we do that ahead of time. In doing so as well, that if a student is in a school based on an out of zone, excuse me, is an inter-district transfer that's already approved, that their grandfather there, but also that they're allowed to stay for the rest of the year, provided that they provide transportation to that location. There are some steps that if somebody, if a student, you know, has other issues that might prevent it, that the district would look at it to determine whether or not they need to remain there or continue to remain there. And again, this was reviewed in detail at the, at the last work session. If you go to the next one, please, the employee tobacco use policy. This is consistent, again, with the suggestions of the GSBA and reviewed by Harman-Hartley. We have a policy already in place, this adds the impact of the CBD oil so that everybody understands that they cannot participate in actively and us not have some sort of process for the potential use if somebody were to do something and they were under the influence of that. Okay, the next one that's there is the student code of conduct, consistent with that as well, not just employees, but our students. And if you slide down to our definition of drugs, it'll be the highlighted area right there. And again, you know, this is verbiage to include the fact that no matter what level of THC is prevalent in the, present in those particular items that we're not accepting that, that it could be categorized as a drug. Those are the upgrades right now and the suggestions for new policies. We normally put those on the table for at least one more board meeting, so they would stay, we would ask for approval of them at the very next board meeting in August, unless there's a exigency circumstances that warrant them to be done earlier. Any questions on any of those? Thank you.
And as Dr. Wilson said, we're just putting this out on the table for another month. Any comments from you or the public? All right, thank you, Dr. Wilson. Our next area is the review now of the Mansfield Gate.
We went out for proposals on the design and installation, not the design, but the installation as designed by Mr. Tuchen for the Mansfield Street Gates. We had one proposer return a proposal, I think you have it in front of you there. It was TJR Group, which is a local company in the amount of ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred, fifty-three dollars and fourteen cents. So that will be our recommendation tonight to proceed with TJR for this project. I'll pretty much wrap up the perimeter of fencing note.
That'll be gates at both ends of Mansfield Street.
What's the estimated completion date for that?
If we've given a notice to proceed tomorrow, it'll be October fifteenth completion.
For the fence and the gate.
Questions about that, so that would be to be considered tonight. All right, thank you.
Now, do you have any opinion about why we only got one response? Is it a difficult design or are we just too busy or whatever?
It wasn't just fence, it had some concrete work, some brick work, fence work. And he was very familiar, he was the one who did the rest of the work as well. He has been successful on the other two or three where we did have competitive bids, I don't know if that's someone else. He's very familiar with what we're trying to do there, so.
Thanks. He's local. All right, thank you, Al. The next item is for GLISI, and you may not know much about it, I'll give you a quick overview, but we'll give you more later. But I wanted to let, I'll turn it over to Dr. Whitehead.
So the Georgia Leadership Institute for School Improvement, otherwise known as GLISI in the state, provides guidance to school administrative teams and school improvement teams on the processes, best effect, best practices for making improvements within your school. And they've gone through some revisions over the past couple of years with the format that they have to improve. And we've gotten feedback from other districts that have participated in the last year and a half with positive results for their schools that they sent to go through the workshop series. It ends up being six days total that a team would go through the training, it's three days. And then they have a month to six weeks to go back and implement the things that they planned while they were in the first training. They come back and review to see what worked, what didn't work, and they just learn that whole cycle process of planning, doing, acting, reviewing, that would be that model for basically action research to improve their school. And so we have an opportunity to use grant funds for this year, we have grant funds which are supplemental. And to supplement what's happening in the leadership academies here locally, we'd like to be able to have four schools participate this year across three different cohorts so they wouldn't all be going at the same exact time. Goodyear would be our first school that would participate in the first cohort that we would take up. Needwood and Jane Macon would be the second cohort group, and Brunswick High would be in the third cohort that we would participate in this year. And we tried to do that as a focus of Goodyear for as its promised school status, just looking for an opportunity to work with them. And they'll have a new AP onboard and trying to work with that team to solidify their work together. And then with Needwood and Jane Macon both having new administrative teams in Brunswick High, we felt like those would be the good starting points for us this year. And then obviously, we'll, we'll come back and see what kind of results we get out of this work this year to determine future cohorts and what we would do with schools moving forward.
Does this cause subs?
I'm sorry?
Substitute teachers?
It won't have substitute teachers, we will work out coverage internally for administrative staff. It will be administrators that will be attending.
Including, I've got to go some, I know Dr. Wilson will go to probably some, I know Valerie, as our liaison will be going to all of them. Ms. Lewis, maybe Kim Gabriel, maybe potentially, but very excited about this. I think if you look at some of the most, districts that are most effective in our state, some of them anyway, they, they sent all of their schools and staffs through their leadership teams through this training at some point. And so our hope that in the next two or three years, we send all of our schools through it. And so we're very excited, we've heard some really great things, you know, about this program. And it's not a big, it's really just focused on school improvement, looking at data, making sure that they have good school improvement processes. It's not a program necessarily, but it really just helps a leadership team know how to do a cause analysis and look at their data and make some, you know, good goals and be able to measure those, just as Mr. Madal was talking about earlier. So we're very excited about this, I think it's going to be a huge boost our district over time. It's a big commitment, but we're excited about it. But what we plan to do is start this, and this fall, provide an overview once we've had that first group or two go through and let you see what they're hearing and seeing when they go through. Any questions about GLISI? Thank you, Dr. Whitehead. Our next area is USHA, I think I'm saying that right, for our data reporting systems, or Dr. Whitehead for that one as well.
So always, you know, looking, this, this will be a renewal for us of the USHA system. I always get asked what it stands for, and all I know of is it stands for USHA, U S A J. But it's actually a Georgia developed project, the person that develops this program and works on it to meet requests that systems have is actually a Georgia resident and developer. The software helps our schools get real-time data extracted from the multiple sources to see where they stand with the items that are going to be used in CCRPI calculations. And it gives them ways to extract data to help monitor discipline, attendance, course grades, and there's one more, behavior, no, I said discipline, discipline grades, attendance, and then graduation progress. So just allows them to have some on-demand reporting to make their jobs just a little bit easier in reporting back for us. So this will be a renewal with them.
No questions, and next item will be still Dr. Whitehead for Power School, which are, I think there's a lot of change in the name.
Yes, so we originally started with this company as Performance Matters, then last year, when we got the renewal, it was People Admin, and now they have been tucked up under Power School, which is actually its own entity as a student information system. But this is going to be one of their subsidiaries under Power School. And so we have the Power School quote that you'll see on there. It also includes human resources for the classified employee evaluation system. But they provide us with an ability to operate our own assessment system and analysis platform that teachers use in the classroom, as well as administrators use to review data.
Do you, it doesn't look like their pricing is driven on our student population or anything, it's just a flat base fee for the program?
The, I'm sorry, Chris, if you don't mind going up, and I know we have an updated thing for this one. But the, one where it says units by students, those are, it's based on our student enrollment. The unit cost is based on the number of students. And then for the evaluation system, I think it may just be a blanket license.
It just looks funny the way they presented it, you would think the student population would be in the quantity and the unit price would be different.
Yes, and like I said, it's a new, new company, and so the. Yes, and like I said, it's a new, new company, and so the invoice does look totally different than it looked last year, so, but it is based on enrollment.
Are we able to verify that pricing based on a per-student agreement in the contract to make sure that it equates to the seventy-two thousand?
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Whitehead. And the final item for proposed action items is for a county-level travel tracker for transportation software support. Dr. Kulis?
And even though this is, this is a low number typically we'll go to board, because we might use this for multiple years, we want to make sure that we present it to the board. Primarily, again, as we try to make huge improvements in our transportation department, field trips that impact on every school, we want to develop a program, and this program does this for us, where we're able to equity distribute the workload to our bus drivers, as well as make sure that we're, we're receiving the funding that's appropriate. So that's what this program does, where it comes out of our regular general budget that comes for transportation, no change, but we're just asking for the board to approve this as well.
Thank you, Dr. Kulis. That was the final item for proposed action items. So this time, I'd like to propose to go into executive session for personnel legal.
Entertainer motion to enter executive session for personnel legal. Motion by Ms. Bobbitt. Second. From Ms. Sam's, any discussion? All those in favor? Question passes six zero at eleven sixteen.
Motion to enter back into open session.
Aye.
Motion by Ms. Bobbitt.
Aye.
Second by Vice Chairman Edgy. Any discussion? All those in favor? Ann is six zero. At eleven forty seven. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
移到
Motion by Ms. Ann.
Second.
Say goodbye Ms. Bobbitt. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Six zero, eleven forty seven. Thank you all very much. We'll see y'all at six o'clock.
Six.